Hey guys, bear with me for a second. You guys hear me?
Yes, sounds bad. Who's here?
Oh, I don't know. Well, I was there before, I think.
Jamie?
Alright, I see Les and Steve Moore is joining us. Who's this other caller?
I don't know, can you hear me?
I can hear you Les, I can see you too.
Hello?
Jamie, this is Steve.
Hey Steve, I can hear you.
Yeah, I might be that third caller on your screen, I'm not sure. Because I came in just to have a last.
Say something now. Steve, okay.
The video, phone for the audio.
Okay, um, it's fine, yeah, we'll just keep you on mute since you're just gonna be an observer today anyway, but there was giving us a little bit of feedback. And in the future, there's a way you can call in and enter certain credentials that'll just pop up your name, so. I'll go ahead and mute, yeah, if you have any questions, there's a text function you can get to me from. You're on mute now, by the way. So, Mike, what, um... So, we'll... Is this it?
Hey Jamie. I'm trying to figure, Jamie. Jamie.
Yeah, is that Rich?
I'm trying, yes, it is. I'm trying to figure out how I can do a background picture so I don't look like I'm sitting, you know, terrible here.
I don't know, I think maybe on Zoom or something, but... Maybe just hang a sheet behind you.
Well, I can, well, I have painters in my condo right now painting. Oh my god, Bruce, good.
Oh, cool.
Change. He's not listening.
Okay. Right. Okay, thanks Mike. Okay, I guess we'll just hang tight until the meeting begins, um, we've got a few more minutes. Got it? Okay, thanks. Hey Bruce.
Hey Jamie.
How do I go to mute? No, 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 I want to go to... Now I can hear you.
Good.
I'll use that as the background. So I couldn't figure it out, so I figured I'd use my door as my background.
Rich, honestly, we can't see your, see anything, it's a black screen.
Really? Good. Can I leave, can I look better than usual?
That's like, girl. He was pretty, dawg. That's one of them reds. Dude, that shit.
Jamie, can you verify who all is here from the commission?
Right now, only you and Rich.
Okay.
And David Carey just sent an email saying he's got an emergency that he's gotta take care of, so he won't be here. But I believe everyone else will.
You know if we have any preliminary business, because there's a lot of cases, or anybody tabling or anything?
Uh, no tablings at all. We've kinda got the agenda set up, so it's grouped by applicant. The Somerfelt has the first two, Jeff Brown has the next two, and Stan Young, so Jeff Brown does have a preliminary thing, but we'll just do it when it comes be, right before his first case. It's just that it's an exception of an existing approved commission order. But, uh, other than that, no tablings, and we haven't heard anything from the public either, so. I don't expect to have many, uh, many other people other than the applicants and the commissioners speaking today. Unless, I don't know, if you can, if you look over to the right, you'll see a list of participants. And you'll see who is logged in by their name. Uh, there are a couple calling users that maybe chose not to identify themselves, but we'll probably do a roll call here before the meeting starts, just to make sure all the commissioners are there.
Yeah.
Hi, this is Skip Wyler. Let me ask you, is it, is it all, is it through video or is it just calling?
Uh, it's through video. And calling.
I think I need, I think the video, you need to download the app? Do I need to download the app to get the video?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hang out, try and download it, and then try and up back in.
Okay, that works. Uh, Rich, Andrew Downey, who's on the line from our Department of Technology, sent a tutorial on how to use the background, so I will, uh, forward that to you if you really wanna a new background.
Yeah, do it for next time, because I could, I'll put up with the door in the back. This is the door to my bedroom behind me.
How I can do that?
Um, Sam, I think...
If you do not know your attending number, press pound to continue.
Can everyone mute themselves? Close time to talk.
Hey Jamie, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, uh, am I all ready to go here, or do I need to call this phone number?
Uh, you're good to go, but we're getting a lot of feedback from you, so you might wanna disable your audio on your computer, and then call back in through your phone. Oh crap.
Bruce, could you mute yourself?
I went ahead and muted him. As a host, I have that ability.
Can you hear me, Jamie?
Yeah, Bruce, we can hear you. I had you on mute, though, for a second, just because there was some feedback. Sounds like you're good now, though.
What are you waiting on, Jamie?
Uh, we're waiting for Jim Bender.
Okay.
Once Jim's there, we can, I mean, technically, we should wait till 4:15 to begin, but, um...
Oh, okay, that's fine.
But I wanna make sure Jim's here, too. He said he would be here.
Do you have my video stream okay, Jamie? This is Stan.
Yeah, Stan, you're fine.
Okay.
Hello, Jamie.
Hey Mike, how are you?
Okay.
Good. Uh, there are some unnamed callers that are on the participant list. Is one of those Jim Bender? Jim, are you there? I guess not, okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, it is officially 4:15. I don't see that Jim Bender has joined. Are you comfortable proceeding?
How many members do we have in attendance?
Commissioner David Carey sent me an email saying he would not be able to attend, he had an emergency, so. Uh, we have Mr. Cooperman, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Mashinsky, Mr. Hoy, and Mr. Williams. Did I forget anybody?
We can go ahead and get going, maybe Jim will come in soon.
Okay, um, before we start, I just wanna go over a few housekeeping issues, just because this is our first WebEx meeting. Uh, just some things to be aware of. Pretty much muted everybody on arrival, except for you, Mr. Chairman, when it's time for the commission to speak. Well, I mean, we'll probably go through our regular routine. Uh, staff will present, and then, um, the applicant, then the commission can ask either staff or the applicant's question, and then the applicant's can, uh, do their presentation. When it's time for whoever is speaking, I've got the agenda ahead of me, I will unmute you, or you can unmute yourself. But if you're not speaking, please do keep the mute button on, just because of the delay and the feedback, and it's easier. On that note, uh, this is being recorded. We are live streaming through YouTube, and Tony Gillum, who's our court reporter, will be taking, making a transcript, so please speak slowly and clearly, so she can get everything down. Uh, finally, um, actually, I think that's about it for my preliminary. Um, I guess if we're gonna be swearing people in, we'll do it individually. That way, we can make sure that they're on the camera saying, "I, you know, swear to tell the truth," or whatever, so. Uh, without further ado, if you're ready, I'll unmute Bruce Somerfelt, and we'll go ahead and get started with case number one, uh, which is 118 Graceland Boulevard, and I'll get the PowerPoint up for you here in a second, too.
Okay, Bruce, since you're the primary person testifying on the first case, I'll go ahead and swear you in. You swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got, would you put your name for the record, your affiliation to this case?
Bruce LFL type, West Ridge Street, agent for the applicant, applicant for the agent.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this case?
I don't, uh... Lou Visco might have been joining us from Castor, I'm not sure if he's on or not.
Seeing no one else, are you presenting this?
Yes.
Yep, I am the, I'm the first planner for the first case. Uh, 118 Graceland Boulevard is located on the west side of North High Street, approximately 660 feet, east of, or south of Fenway Road, and the site is within the Clintonville Area Commission. The precise parcel we're talking about is this giant hook-shaped parcel, but specifically, uh, the ground sign that's currently in existence. Uh, the applicant proposed to legitimize the existing ground sign, uh, and expand the multi-tenant ground sign to include more than, more tenant panels, uh, basically by enlarging the cap and widening the base. Uh, there's a special permit request to allow off-premises signage, variances which allow off-premise graphics within the community commercial overlay, uh, to allow pylon sign within the community commercial overlay, and to increase the number of tenant panels from four to seven. Uh, finally, to increase the height from six feet to 21 feet, and to increase the portion of the graphic area devoted to tenant panels from 50% to 80%. Again, as you can see on the slideshow, uh, what is on your left side is existing, and this is actually what's being, this was the original proposal, which was denied by Clintonville and by staff. The applicant reworked his plan and came up with this final product, which is, uh, more conformist with community commercial overlay, and has garnered a recommendation approval from both staff and the area commission. And with that, I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Jamie, I hope that you can all hear me. Just a quick history on this, we were, we had a, we had, um, an application in front of you guys in November, that after meeting with staff and the Clintonville Area Commission, we tabled to try and get more conformity and in respect to the staff's request and, and planning and traffic's findings, um, which basically was to take the existing sign and include the Graceland Flats residential component, and all make it into one sign instead of the two signs that were part of the previous application back in November. We then revised it to what you see in front of you now. We took it back in front of the Clintonville Area Commission and received unanimous approval. With that, we got a staff report, approval staff report from planning and traffic. Um, basically, this sign will have exactly the same footprint as the existing sign, will be using a new foundation, but at the same setback, uh, and the same mass, so you can see in that exhibit, Jamie, if you go back one. Yeah, the, the original proposal had two signs, as you can see there, there's the low, low Graceland Flat sign, and then the, um, the facing the other one, but with the recommendations of staff, we incorporated it all and combined it into one side. And so that's what you have there now. It's, the variance is, is because of the overlay, um, having an off-premise sign, because Graceland, some of the tenants are off-premise. Um, as you could see originally on that parcel configuration, um, it's a long, deep, narrow parcel with very little frontage, so we're gonna be identifying some tenants that aren't on that parcel. Um, notably, the Graceland Flats residential component, which is all the way to the west end of that parcel, the far left end. which is all the way to the west end of that parcel, the far-left end, as you see there, with no street presence and no street visibility. We need some functionality for some signage and some identification up there. The special conditions exist for the parcel, as many retailers are tucked away in the far back of the very deep, shallow center that is made up of many parcels, and wayfinding is impossible without the correct identification. Though, of course, for off-premise graphics is different from others in the zoning district to the fact that the development is considerable depth and very shallow street frontage. Without signage exposure, some retailers would not be able to identify or offer wayfinding opportunities and would suffer and not recognize a reasonable rate of return, granting this fair, not be injurious to the neighboring properties, will not be contrary to the intent of the code. And retail uses on the one side, but to further recommendation, the city planning and zoning staff and the recommendation of Clintonville Area Commission, we arrived at this.
Were you complete?
Yes.
Are there any questions for Mr. Somerfelt?
Mr. Chairman, I did have one other comment I forgot to add. There is a comment on the bottom of the report that states that the special permit for off-premises signage will be for entities that have access from Graceland Boulevard. For example, no signage that are on the east side of High Street can have off-premise signage. It's only for the tenants within the parcel that has been identified.
Okay. Any questions from any of the commission members? Mr. Somerfelt, is the new sign going to be located where it is currently, and the other sign coming down, or are you moving that sign at all?
The other sign isn't there currently. That was an exhibit when we were coming to you in November with two signs. So this new sign replaces the existing sign that's there in exact location.
Okay.
So there'll only be one sign of that, of that section on the north side of.
Okay. If there are no questions and no one else to speak to this case, this appears appropriate for this location with the revisions, and can we vote on this? Are there any conditions, Mr. Freeze?
Yeah, there was a condition that the special permit would only be for entities that, but Graceland Boulevard.
Okay.
So no, no companies or businesses across High Street can, local.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Somerfelt?
Yes.
We'll vote on this.
Okay, Mr. Bender? He's not here, okay. Mr. Mashinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cooperman? Mr. Cooperman?
You're by for fun.
You hear me now? Yes?
Yes.
All right, I gotta put these headphones on.
And your votes are?
Excuse me, Jamie?
You're in and out. I can hear you now, but I couldn't a second ago.
Yeah, I voted yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes, and it is approved, Mr. Somerfelt. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next case, what up here? Is, you see, 20-009, 2843 to 2929 Old Tangi River Road. I guess that's you again, Mr. Somerfelt. Okay, Jamie, are you presenting again?
This is my case as well. 2843 through 2929 Old Tangi River Road is located on the western portion of the parcel, located on the northwest corner of Old Tangi River Road and Old Ackerman Road. There's no area commission for this site, and it is zones, NYPD, commercial plan development. As you see on the site plan, the 9.2 acre site is currently being developed with a single unit. Oh, that's not the right. A multi-unit development near the Ohio State University. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive graphics plan, and we'll just go break it down for the, by the way, the slideshow. So as you can see in the first slide, the lower picture is the east elevation. On the east elevation, currently being proposed, we'll discuss the roof signs first. They're asking for roof signs and wall signs and ground signs. They're asking for two roof signs on the east elevation. One roof sign on the southeast elevation is going to look like this on the picture. You can see the background and the details to the right, and that'll be mimicked on both ends of the east elevation. Facing south, I'm sorry, facing north on north elevation will be a similar roof sign, and the same thing will be on the south elevation. As far as wall signs, they're going to have some major tenants. And in this area here, as well as each individual ground tenant, will have a small tenant panel that is going to be one square foot for each lineal foot. Further wall signs on the south elevation, in addition to the roof sign on the south elevation, they're going to have this vertical wall sign. Then finally, the two ground signs that they're replacing, the original is going to be on the left, and it's proposed is on the right for each ground sign. And staff's recommendation is, as stated in the Old Tangi West area plan, it is recommended that signs be placed and sized such that they are in keeping with the scale and size of the building's design and general streetscape. Roof signs and excessively large signs that interfere with visual character are discouraged. Staff does not support the rooftop signs and requests that the applicants for projecting signs or wall signs, which they have, for this mixed-use building. We also request that they reduce the size of the monument signs so that they're consistent with the plan's recommendations for the community commercial overlay standard. And with that, we'll give it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Jamie.
Okay, Mr. Somerfelt?
Yeah, thank you.
Present your case.
And Jamie, just to retort a little bit, I thought after the identification that the ground signs were staying in exactly the same location and using the same, same foundations. See, planning and traffic approval for those, for those ground signs.
Yeah, you received approval from the Division of Traffic Management. They initially were concerned with the proximity to the entrances, but since they're being replaced, they're okay with it. Planning, on the other hand, still did feel that they were rather large, not consistent with the overlay.
Thank you. Just a little bit of background, that some developers spent, spent many, many, many months developing functional, attractive, thematic, avant-garde signage that was very apropos for this large, large development. 12-plus acres, 122,000-plus square feet of retail, 260 residences on what that east elevation you're looking at there is approximately 700 feet in lineal length. So it's huge, got great visibility on Old Tangi and great visibility to the south off of Ackerman, and some visibility on the south approach as you come down Old Tangi. With the architectural features, it was a struggle, as you can see, to try and get some functional and identification signage that would match the scale and the intent of this architectural beast. Rooftop signs included in, which are required to be included graphics plan, which meet all the criteria for roof signage as far as the code goes, with the one exception that it doesn't have a backdrop or a complete enclosed wall or parapet in behind it. We tried to design a sign for the city with its namesake that had kind of a skyline effect with an open-air visual, so it wasn't too massive. Those frames you see around the individual characters are open. You do see the sky in behind there, and they're kind of floating letters in a framed entity. Got those on the, on the corners, east and south, northeast. Kind of wrap those corners, give some presence to this, to this, this development. The overall size of all these graphics for the facility are within code and require any variances for size as, as far as the building signs go. The two existing pylons that are there, one large 35-foot plus or minus on Ackerman, or 40 feet on Old Tangi, and 23 feet on Ackerman. The existing signs, we're not increasing any square footage. In the setback regulation, we're staying exactly where we are. In fact, we're using the same foundations and just refacing and redressing those. Obviously, the McDonald's and the, and the apples are crucial to have some identification on those signage, so we're staying within the intent of what's already there and not entertaining larger signs for, for a bigger project. We've got some vertical wall signs on the east and the south, just by nature of the large expanse of that presence. If the wall sign, the roof signs prevent some visibility on the, on the middle of the, of the elevation there, we needed some extra identification. Had some space on that architectural elevation. We've got an allowance in this graphics plan for kind of a truss arch system that sees the north end of the east elevation, which is for major anchor tenants that may take over the big box anchors that are coming in. And the allowance would be a request that that be either divided into two signs, as you see there, major tenant one, major tenant two, or it might only be one cabinet on there for one side, depending on how the break, breakdown of the lease space would be. And then there is an allowance for the retail center we put into the graphics plan, a criteria for the agents and for the, so, old retail space utilized, conformed, uniform sign criteria. Allowance for size on that that would be permitted individually, as long as the graphics plan is approved. We did meet with staff, development team, and Mr. Chris Mizoudi at that point, before we presented this and put a whole package together and met with, with good reviews at that point. So we proceeded and got it submitted to you guys. The overall square foot, the overall frontage is a, Old Tangi, 700 feet, which skyline graphics on the roof only account for less than 50% of that mass. The variances that we need to cite, even though it's a graphics plan, we don't need the hardships. The developed parcel has increased setbacks and the main arterial and architectural guidelines offer sign placement. This development is different than others in the same deadzoni district due to its sheer size and offers mixed-use opportunities that are functional, visible signs. The increased scale and correctly functional graphics, functional signs, a developer could expect a reasonable return in service. Implementing this graphics package will not be injurious to the neighboring properties and not contrary to the intent of the code of public interest. And I think maybe why not with the developer is, is included, and he might want to say a few words as well.
Yeah. Bruce?
Yeah, so, as you probably see.
Just a second, sir. Sir, I need to swear you in. Swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. Repeat your name for the record, your affiliation to this case.
My real name is Robert J. Wyler Jr. I go by Skip Wyler, and I'm one of the owners of the property.
Thank you, just a second. Mike Hoy was having trouble hearing. Jamie, did you, is that corrected yet?
I, I don't know, Mike, are you still having trouble hearing?
Mike, can you hear? Mike?
Lost his visual.
That happened to me earlier, and I had to X out, I had to close it out and then restart it in a different web browser.
Can you hear yet? Can you text him or something and see if he can't?
Send him an email right now. We may have to skip him for this vote.
Jamie, Jamie, the problem here is I have to recuse him from this case because my firm represents, yep. So do we have enough to vote?
Let's get Mike back on.
Mike back?
That would bring us down to five. Wait, we have five now, minus two, we only have three. We'll have to make sure that Mike can hear, so give me one second.
Mike's back. Mike, can you hear now?
The same thing happened to me. I was kicked off. I had to call back in, or it called me back.
Is he back yet? Excuse us a minute, Skip. It's, he did just correct us.
I just messaged him, so let's see what he says.
I was trying to do that. Mr. Cooperman, no, Mr. Somerfelt, can you? I know that site. Is there a, I haven't been by there in a while, obviously, but are they moving all the outlot properties and incorporating them into this building?
I will let Skip speak to that more than I can, but the existing outlots that are there that are staying there, if I believe, the, these, I believe, are staying. I think the McDonald's is staying. Skip, is that right?
Yes, correct.
You can't really, I haven't sworn him in yet, have I?
Right, those outpuzzles are staying as, as they are.
Yeah, in front of the center is a McDonald's. The outparcel stays there, and then over behind the gas station, which is not involved, we don't have the gas station, is Raising Cane's.
Did I, do we finish swearing you in, Mr. Wyler?
Yeah.
Okay, then I had another question while we're trying to get Mike in. The sign out in front, is this, well, maybe it's for Mr. Somerfelt. Is this sign any larger than the one that was currently there?
No.
Are we having, are we, we have Mike back yet?
I was texting with Mike, and I told him to X out of the meeting, you know, close out of the meeting and then rejoin it, and hopefully, he's trying to do that right now.
Jamie, I'd like to see that, that site plan again. Can you make it a little larger? I couldn't see it very well.
Uh, yeah, I'll tell you what I'll do. I'll go into the actual site plan. I'm back?
Oh, good.
Here you are, Mike.
Man, okay.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to.
Yeah, I'd like to see that site plan again before we go on. A second.
Do I need to do something?
Not yet, Mike. We're still taking.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
While he's trying to bring that up, did you have something you wanted to say, Mr. Wyler?
Well, I was just saying, the project, it's, it's a unique project in that it's, because of its size. It's basically about a city block. So on a site plan, you really can't tell, and you can't tell till you go look at it. But it's the, the length, the length of the building is almost a full city block. But it's the, the length, the length of the building is almost a full city block. So I think, um, while the signs may sound big, when you look at it for the, for the size of the project, they really are not.
Okay, the signs on the building for tenants, they're, none of those are for the out parcels, correct?
Correct.
You don't have a major tenant yet.
Correct.
Are there any questions of Mr. Somerfeld or Mr. Wyler?
This is, uh, this is Mike. Um, and I, you know, I missed some of the, some of the conversation there, obviously, but, uh, I guess the only thing I really kind of, um, had any objection to was the, the blocks, let's say the city, you know, and they're just rectangles above the, the roof line, kind of floating, I don't know, I just kind of, that's, it, it, it would seem like if there was some sort of a background to that, whether it's a semi-background of perforated metal or something like that, or extended parapet or something, but that's just my, that's just my only comment on that, I think. Um, I mean, the rest of it seemed pretty good to me, and like Mr. Wyler said, it's a big project, really big project, nice project.
Yeah, there's, uh, Mike, an answer to that. We, we played around with a multitude of designs, and as you can see, and as I mentioned, there's very little presence on the architectural features to be able to get a functional scaled sign that works with the scale of the city block as, as. Um, we wanted more air and less mass rather than increase a parapet extension, um, or put an, or a screen behind it and let the airflow, we think it would be less visual clutter, um, this way. And the fact, again, with, with its name being the city, we wanted to play off a little bit of the city skyline, it's proximally to Ohio State, putting a block around it. Um, there was a bunch of factors that came to this design and trying to minimize the, the, um, mass. That's why we put in those open frames, so when you do look at it from the, from the street level, seeing some floating left, kind of like in the old days, the old dispatch building, or the fifth third, we haven't got a bunch of frames and, and, um, ugly grid work up there, but these things just kind of float in frames with an illuminated presence that's pretty avant-garde and pretty nice and unique. We didn't have much choice with space, again, with, with the architectural features on a seven-hundred-foot-plus-minus-linear frontage of, of building, the overall length of that city block. If we put a screen behind it, or a mesh, if you will, a mesh, you probably just, you know, um, allow for clutter and, and, and create a bigger frame, I think, or bring a bigger block up there, it might be more evident.
Am I correct in assuming that you've got a roof sign on east and north and south elevations and a wall sign? South and east, south and east. Where's the east wall sign? I was think, I was thinking of the two vertical city, the city signs, where are they?
One on the, just.
On the south elevation.
The center on the east and centered on the south.
Okay, I understand where the one in the south is, I don't understand where the one in the east is, and I'm not quite sure I understand why you need a roof sign on the south and a wall sign.
The, um, the, the sightlines are great for the, I mean, it'd be for different visibility guidelines, sightlines for the, for the roof sign on the south as it would be for the wall sign. Um, with the elevations, you're going to see the wall sign, and you're going to see the roof sign. You're not going to see the wall sign as you, on all and tangy, uh, you'll see the roof sign if you're on Ackerman. Wall sign.
Your sign centered on that wall sign.
Bruce, I need you to repeat that a little bit of it.
Sorry. Um, the visual sightlines are the, are the drug, the intent of why we've got a roof sign and a wall sign at the south. North on all and Angie, I will be predominantly for the roof sign that's on that corner because of the grade elevation and the sightlines, the topography, the foliage and so forth. North towards the intersection of Ackerman and the Angie, the roof sign present. East on Ackerman, towards the intersection, looking north, or on the wall sign, looking on the roof sign, also due to the angle and the layout of the, the footprint of the building on that parcel. So they both have their own, own, um, in importance. And the Chairman Thompson's point, we've, all sign on the elevation is just north of the center, Jamie, if you can get the east elevation up there. East elevation, which is the first slide you had, I think. See it right there, Chairman Thompson, just, just where the white block, the charcoal block, about the center, vertically to match, that's the, um, south sign.
On the north side, you only have a, a roof sign?
There's no visibility for any wall signs on the north. It's not a functional, there's no functional visibility to put a sign there, and we didn't.
Okay, are there any questions from the commissioners? I have a question for you, Jamie. If the sign and the, the ground sign is virtually the same size, I'm not sure I understand your objection for the monument sign.
Uh, the objection is because the signs are non-conforming as they are, and, yeah, So, yeah, planning, planning stated, because they're non-conforming as they are, they're totally going to revamp the sign, they might as well bring them into performance, but to answer your question, no, they're not going to be any larger than what's existing.
Okay, considering the size of this development, I'm not sure it's that obtrusive.
Also, if I can jump in, this is Skip again, the, um, I, McDonald's was there before we redeveloped the center, and then we've got a, in our lease, the requirement is for them to keep that sign, and so when we went to McDonald's, because we wanted to redevelop it, the initial proposal was to redo total, redo the signs and build all new signs. McDonald's basically said, as long as you don't touch my sign, don't make it any smaller or any lower, uh, you can do what you want, but you can't touch my sign. So I think, uh, my, my hands are tied on what I can do with McDonald's based on my existing lease.
Okay.
And that's one of the reasons that we sat down with Chris Buzidi and his team early on, because we really wanted to get some, some approvals at the get-go, and, and that's why we brought this to you, because they met with reviews early.
Okay. Uh, were there any conditions on this at all, Jamie?
No.
Okay, then let's vote on this plan as presented.
Okay, um, may I ask whether Mr. Bender has heard enough of this conversation to be able to vote? I see he's on the screen now.
Dave, the answer to that is no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
No.
No? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. Cooperman?
Have to recuse myself.
Okay, Mr.? Okay, thank you, sorry, I forgot. Mr. Hoy?
Uh, yes.
Um, Mr. Maschinsky?
Yes.
And Chairman Thompson?
Yes, but if Mr. Bender doesn't vote and Mr. Cooperman can't vote, it does not seem it has passed.
Do we want a presentation to Mr. Bender if he's on now?
What do you say, Jamie? Is that proper?
Uh, well, I, I would leave it up to Mr. Bender if he feels he heard enough of the argument to make a vote. Jim, do you vote?
Okay, I studied this before, um, and, uh, I was, uh, pretty familiar with what's going on here, so I feel like I could vote.
Okay, then Dave, call, call the roll for Jim.
Okay, Mr. Bender?
I vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Based on that, gentlemen, it has passed.
Jamie, doesn't Mr. Bender need to be seen as well as heard legally?
Uh, I thought I was being seen.
Oh, we're not getting visual on you. Is that ever a requirement before the? There he is.
Now we see him.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
So one more time, so we can see you now, can you state your vote again, Mr. Bender?
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, our third case is forty-one thirty-one Worth Avenue with the applicant, please step forward, I think that's Mr. Brown. Mr. Brown?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, I swear you in. Can't see you yet. I don't know if it's just because of the, swear to tell whole truth and nothing but true, so if you got.
I do.
Repeat your name for the record and your affiliation to this case.
Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant.
Thank you, who's presenting this one?
This is Phil Bennett presenting.
Mr. Price.
This is Phil presenting, can you hear me?
All right, go ahead, Phil.
All right, forty-one thirty-one Worth Avenue is located on the southwest corner of Worth Avenue and Stelter Road in Northeast Area Commission, its own commercial plan development. The one-point-one acre site is developed with a five-story office building and associated parking. Surrounding uses include proposed commercial land to the north, west, and south, and a shopping center to the east. The applicant proposes to install three roof signs for the major office tenants and MI homes. Any amendments to the current graphics plan require graphics commission approval, and roof signs require graphics plan always. In July twenty nineteen, a graphics plan was approved that allowed roof signs only in interior boundary zone of Easton. Uh, Mr. Freeze, could you show the graphics plan, um, map? This was the original.
Hey, Jim Bender, can you mute yourself? A little feedback from you. There we go. All right, Phil, go ahead.
So this was the original, uh, graphics plan approved at Easton, um, and it allowed roof signs only in the interior boundary zone, within the blue. Buildings within this zone were generally located at least twenty, two-hundred feet from primary vehicular arteries such as Stelter Road. The subject property is located in the zone that does not allow roof signs according to the current graphics plan. The Northeast Area Plan states the building-mounted signs should not exceed ten feet in height, which is consistent with the proposed signage plan. The Northeast Area Commission recommends approval of this request. City departments recommend disapproval. The proposal complies with five of the six applicable guidelines listed in section thirty-three seventy-seven point two-six. Uh, and I, it's, it's my fault for not providing the exhibit showing these guidelines. Um, so roof signs are only allied, only allowed with a graphics plan, um, and the code provides for guidelines but not requirements for these roof signs. So we are, we assessed these signs based on the guidelines, not requirements, and it fulfilled five out of the six applicable guidelines. Um, so the, uh, the exception being subsection A, which limits the proposed aggregate graphic area of roof and wall signs to the maximum graphic area allowed for the building. The allowable aggregate graphic area for the building is one-thirty-two-point-five-eight square feet, and the applicant is proposing eight-hundred-and-seventy square feet total, resulting in an increase of five-hundred-and-fifty-six percent. The north and east elevations do not have public entrances. If those elevations had public entrances, the allowable aggregate graphic area would be nine-hundred, nine-hundred-and-seventy-six-point-five-eight square feet, they would be allowed. Therefore, staff would recommend approval of two out of the three roof signs proposed. The current MI Homes headquarters, uh, if you can show those photos, Jamie, in the PowerPoint, um, the current MI Homes building has two wall signs. Uh, so we think it's fair to recommend approval of two out of the three roof signs proposed. If the commission were to approve the proposal, staff recommends the following condition: the proposed roof signs will be installed in lieu of wall and/or ground signs. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Um, did you recommend any particular two or just leaving it open to whichever two we decide?
I, I would leave that open to you and, uh, the applicant comment.
Okay, okay, thank you. Mr. Brown, would you present your case?
Sure. Jamie, could you go back to the site plan for the office building? Thank you. Um, yeah, this, this building for MI is in the new urban part of Easton. Uh, it is east of Nordstrom's and, and northeast of the Macy's, and so this area, um, has the additional element of the residential, and the buildings are right at the street. As you can see, the north elevation and the east elevations are, are, are right there. Now, MI's current headquarters is over in what they call the Easton Oval, which is along two-seventy. Uh, that's more of a campus-type setting, uh, where you have parking, uh, between the building and the freeway. And as you all know, in terms of the calculation of the signage, it depends, one, do you have a public entrance, two, what's the setback, um, of the building? And so when you do that, as the staff report indicates, um, I have very little signage allowed. If, if you would do the normal circumstances and, and have a public access, um, then as Phil indicated in the staff report, then the signage I'm asking for, for all three total, uh, complies with the square footage, so I meet all the guidelines. Uh, but in this instance, you, you can't have a public door right there, uh, because the building is right on the right-of-way, and as you can see from this drawing, uh, there is a parking garage under construction to the west or the left side of that building, and that's where most of the people are going to be coming from. So that is where the main entrance is on the southwest side of the building. So, um, I talked with Bob Schottenstein about that. Obviously, they would like to keep all three, uh, because again, it's, to us, it's a mere technicality in terms of the lack of a public entrance, um, and the setback of the building, both of which just roll into. both of which just roll into the design of the building and the location of the building. We would like to have all three, but if the commission is uncomfortable with that, then we would propose one on the south side and one on the east side of the building. We would also ask if that's the direction. That open white space to the south of our office building may be another office building sometime in the future. And if we do go with the two signs, we would just like to have the ability that if an office building goes in there and does block that visibility, that we can move that south sign to the north side. And the other thing in terms of the particular condition, the only thing that we want to point out is more than likely there will be some sort of a directional sign at the entrance to the building at the southwest corner so that people either walking there or coming out of the parking garage will know where that's, where there's going. So as long as there, the condition doesn't prohibit something like that, a directional, at that point, we understand, you know, we're not going to get another big freestanding sign or anything, but to have some tenant directional at that entrance for people coming out of the parking garage, we think would be important. We presented this to the Northeast Area Commission. They recommended, amended approval of all the signs. So that's the situation. MI is moving their corporate headquarters over here. It's a different style building. It lends itself to this rooftop signage. And again, as I pointed out, if we had public entrances and a bit of a setback off the right-of-way, then our total square footage would comply with all six of the guidelines.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions?
Jeff, can you see the building from two-seventy?
No.
No, okay.
I don't think so. You've got development between, you've got the whole Easton gateway.
Yeah.
I mean, you may be able to glance because it's a five-story building, but
Okay.
it's not like you're going to have a direct view corridor or something like that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do have a question to Jeff. I mean, really, there, I guess, uh, there are identific- signs, but really, I mean, they're on a, they're on a wall, you know, it's a parapet, and I think definition of our code would call it a roof sign and all that, but visually looking at it, they're sort of like wall signs, I think. Is that, I mean, is that correct?
Yes, the, as I found out the hard way, there's the distinction between a wall sign and a roof sign if the roof sign is not on the same plane as the wall and setback. And obviously, in terms of our roof sign, it is setback from the plane of the building elevation. So it's not a wall sign, it's a rooftop sign.
But appearance-wise, it's kind of, you know, there's the, the couple signs there that are sort of like that, I think. But they're also, I think the two-hundred, Phil, I think they're like the two-hundred foot setbacks too, also. So this would be a, this would be kind of a new situation for that, I guess.
In the history of the graphics plans out at Easton, and there have been many of them over the years, the commission has always wanted us to come back and present rooftop signs. They didn't really want to give us carte blanche. Now, the last time we did this, last year, we allowed rooftop signs on two-story buildings as a matter of right, but any taller than that, you would have to come in front of the commission.
Okay.
The apartment Schmidt's sign, it got approved specifically by the commission.
Jeff, what was the rationale for making this corridor no roof signs when you did the submission earlier?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'll take the blame because I wrote the text. No one in terms of the discussion ever thought, it didn't come up in the discussions less in terms of that. So, I mean, Easton doesn't have an issue with it because all the signage in the building design has to be approved by their in-house. It just wasn't something that we really thought about.
So are we going to end up just basically trashing this whole corridor through here with your signs?
I mean, I think it's, in terms of a major, you're having a major office tenant that wants identification of the building. And I think in terms of the location, if you ought to think more of this as downtown, where they have this type of signage on numerous buildings. So, and again, as Mike just pointed out, you know, it kind of looks like a wall sign, talks like a wall sign, but because it's setback from the building elevation, it gets classified as a roof sign.
Okay. Is there anyone else who might speak in this case? Excuse me.
The area commission did okay all three signs, is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And this is the graphics plan, right, Jamie?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Were there any conditions?
There was a condition about no additional freestanding sign, and I just, as long as we could have some directional sign or something like that, because you're going to have people coming out of the parking garage, you know.
How do you write that in, Jamie?
I can, uh...
Southwest corner or something?
I can speak to that. I believe for directional signs, they would be allowed by right, less than ten square foot, uh, signs in graphic area without needing a permit.
Multiple tenant names on it.
Yeah, we can qualify that by saying that they're limited to the approved identification signs. Since we have a definition of identification sign in our code.
Does anybody, any of the commissioners feel like we need to limit them to two roof signs? Okay, not hearing any. Vote on this as presented then with the conditions.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cooperman. Are you there, Mr. Cooperman?
Yeah, can you hear me?
He's on mute.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Hoy.
Yes.
Mr. Bender.
Yes.
Mr. Mashinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Chairman Thompson.
Yes, and it is approved. Thank you. Let's see. Our next case is sixty-five fourteen Hayden Run Road, that's Mr. Brown again.
Uh, Chair Thompson?
Yes, sir.
Before we go on, I forgot, Jeff and I spoke before the meeting. There was a preliminary matter that we want to take care of. And since we're at Easton, this would be a good time to do it. In twenty nineteen, the commission approved a ground sign, um, at the Easton two-seventy exit. Mr. Brown, we'd like to extend that commission order for another two years with an expiration date of May twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, I'm sorry.
Can you be a little more specific about where that sign was? Is that the one out at the right-of-way two-seventy?
Yeah, that was out at the right-of-way. You approved, area commission approved it.
Uh, let me share that.
Anybody else remember it?
Yeah, I remember it. And I don't have a problem personally.
Okay, I don't either. Do I have a motion to extend this rule for two years?
Les, this is Rich, I'll make the motion. So I'm okay.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
I was second.
Let's vote on the motion to extend this order for two years till five-twenty-two. All favor using sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. I didn't hear any nays. Any opposed, you sign a nay. I don't hear any nays, so the ayes have it. It's approved, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
And let's go to the case on, uh, the next case. Who's presenting this one, Mr.? Who's presenting this one?
I am, Mr. Merritt. I'm calling in on an old phone to try to minimize the amount of echoing we've got going on in our office. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. So GC twenty dash zero-zero-three at sixty-five fourteen Hayden Run Road, which is located on the north side of Hayden Run Road, approximately two-hundred and thirty feet south of Hayden Run Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a graphics plan. The site consists of a single undeveloped parcel that was recently zoned to the CPD Commercial Plan Development District and is scheduled for commercial development. Adjacent to the property, there are several multi-unit residential developments, an undeveloped lot with a retention pond, and a single unit dwelling slated for redevelopment as a veterinary office. The applicant proposes a graphics plan for numerous wall signs and a ground sign to provide visibility for tenants from multiple frontages. The CPD Commercial Plan Development District committed to community commercial overlay graphic standards. The Columbus Citywide Planning Poll recommends that signs for storefronts, businesses, in the same building development should be coordinated design-reinforcing rather than competing with each other. Also, monument-style signs are recommended and should not be taller than six feet. Planning staff finds that the proposal isn't. The Hayden Run Civic Association recommends approval of this request as well. To summarize, staff can recommend approval of the proposed graphics plan if the signage is consistent with recommendations of C two P two. But unique characteristics of the site, including visibility from multiple frontages and the presence of an interior parking lot creates a need for additional signage on multiple building faces. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any other exhibits, Jamie?
Sorry, I was thinking of another option.
Okay.
There are no conditions, most of it is laid out in the graphics plan in terms of square footage of what's allowed per building and space.
Okay. And Mr. Brown, would you present your case, please?
You want to swear me in for this one?
No, you've also already sworn in.
Okay. I'm Jeffrey L. Brown, attorney for the applicant. When we worked with the planning department on the zoning of this property, they asked us to bring the, one of the buildings out to Hayden Run. So you, what you have are buildings on the perimeter, that number, where you see the number one, that building is right up on the roadway, and then you have the parking interiors. So we had to come up with a signage package that would give visibility on the perimeter of the property as well as provide signage more traditionally that you would find facing the parking lot. Working with planning in terms of the original layout caused us to need the graphics plan for the signage for the overall development. We presented this to the Hayden Run Civic Association, and they voted in support of the request.
Thank you, is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this case? Can you, can you enumerate the signage again, Mr. Brown?
What we're trying to do is, as Jamie shows you, there's a freestanding sign at the entrance with tenant panels on it. And then the balance of it is providing signage on each side of the building, so you would have something visible from the roadway and also something visible internally to the parking lot.
And what are the other uses in this site besides?
This is, there's C four uses, so you're going to get a mixture of retail and restaurants. That's what plan shows, a couple possible patios for outdoor dining. It's going to be a typical mixture of retail restaurant and maybe even some, you know, office-type uses in there.
Okay, was this, was... What are we approving on this, just the graphics plan?
This is a graphics plan, so it addresses all the signage for that whole development there.
And the only exhibit I've seen is the one for the ground sign. Is that correct?
That's the only thing, the, the, the wall sign information is all done texturally as part of the graphics plan.
In, in your packet, you'll find the graphics plan text, which is the meat and bone of this.
The wall signs, that text seems reasonable.
Okay.
I'm just presenting to the Hayden Run Civic Association, we recommend approval.
Okay, is there anyone else with a question or a comment? Are there any conditions to this? Mr. Michael?
No, no conditions, you would just stamp and sign the graphics plan text.
Okay. Can you hold on just a second? Okay, let's, uh, vote on this as conditioned then.
Okay, Mr. Bender.
Yes.
I didn't make a finding, did I? Or no, this is the plan, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mr. Mashinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Cooperman.
Yes.
Mr. Hoy.
Uh, yeah.
Chairman Thompson.
Yes, and it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too. Next case is thirty-seven hundred Easton Market. The applicant, please come forward. Mr. Young?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. Please swear you in. Swear to tell whole truth and nothing is true, up you go.
I do.
Could you repeat your name for the record and your affiliation to this case?
Stanley W. Young III, I'm the agent for the applicant.
Thank you. Who's presenting this one?
Uh, it's mine.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thirty-seven hundred Easton Market is located at the intersection of Easton Market and Morse Crossing. Site is within the Northeast Area Commission, is on LM Manufacturing and LC four Commercial. If you're not speaking right now, can you please mute yourself? It seems to be some feedback. Thank you. Uh, proposal is to repeal or replace an existing graphics plan, specifically to increase the number of tenant panels for an existing ground sign from twelve to sixteen. Here are, in the exhibits, examples of what was previously approved. This is the ground signing question that will be adding another tenant, I guess, I don't even know what you call it, a third one of these with extra tenant panels. The Northeast Area Commission recommends approval of this request. Staff is recommending disapproval. Staff is concerned that adding a third cabinet resulting in additional tenant panels will cause the sign to be unreadable. This violates key objectives found in the statement and purpose of the graphics code specifically, but not limited to encouraging public and private signs that are readable, reduce visual clutter by controlling the number, size, and location of private signs, and to regulate private signs so that they do not obstruct vision or interfere with the functions of drivers. If approved, the staff does recommend the following condition, that the elevations are stamped, and that is all. So again, here is the proposal.
Okay. Mr. Young, would you present your case, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. With respect to the retail stores that are subject to this new cabinet, TJ Maxx, Marshall's, Sierra, and Home Goods, these stores are twelve-hundred and forty-two feet west of Morse Crossing. They have no identification out by the street, and at a time like this, when retail is trying to get back... to get back on track, certainly at this intersection of Eastern Market and Morse Crossing, they really need something out by the road because these subject stores do sit so far back, they're the farthest to the very west that they could be off of Morse Crossing. This happens to be the only sign in the complete graphics plan that we're repealing and replacing. All the other freestanding signs are going to remain the same. With respect to clutter that staff had a question on, we're not adding any new ground signs, we're just adding to the existing freestanding sign with a cabinet. And there was a question, I think, in staff's report regarding the size. The size of each one of these tenant panels is about 3'11" by 8'4". So they're almost, each one of those is almost the size of a sheet of plywood, about 32 square feet, which makes them very readable from ground level from a vehicle as you're approaching Eastern Market coming off of Morse Crossing. So we believe at a time like this where retail is struggling, these stores that are very far west in this development really need to have an opportunity to be recognized so people can make that turn, head westbound and go to these stores. Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. Young, my only reserve, reservation to this is that if this is approved, that those don't get divided up any smaller. Some of the other two have gotten divided into much smaller signs, and it does become rather cluttered.
Well, we would commit to you, sir, that we would maintain these four panels and anything that would certainly be, that would have to come through the graphics commission anyway. So we would, we would certainly commit to maintaining a maximum of four of these tenant panels as a condition for approval.
I have a feeling that the tenant panels being as low as they are should be confined to a single line of text because the, I think if you are getting more than that, it is going to become unreadable, but it's okay the way that it is because you have it that way, but I think it should be made text so that it stays that way, just one line of text per sign.
Sure. I understand.
Any other questions?
Yeah, this is Mike. Did the client ever consider, like, I mean, to me, I'm looking at this sign, and it is, like staff says, it is cluttered, and it's kind of circumvents, in a way, our standard sign code that has the, you know, limits the number of tenant panels and so forth. Like, if you look at the new eastern area over by where Jay Alexander is, they utilize a computer, a computer message center on, in one of the spaces, so they kind of maintain, you know, I can't remember exactly how many it is, but it almost like meets what the sign code is, but that one computer panel rotates the various tenants that are back into that area there, thus eliminating the clutter and all that kind of stuff. And I mean, it looks better, and I'm kind of, kind of like Jim said, the sign is pretty low and could become, you know, I see that part, you know, that R there, you know, gets blocked and all that kind of stuff. It just looked, to me, it just looks overpowering. It just seems like if they, if they were able to, you know, utilize a computer sign, say, for that top section, and then the bottom, and then the next one down that's already there, maybe it's like the top four major tenants that are in there that they keep their names in there and not, not resort to that third section. That's just my, you know, my opinion of just looking at, kind of like the same sign they have anyways over the other, you know, to the east of that.
Mike, this, Mike, this is Rick. You know, I think, I think that's a great idea. I think easy to do with your building, a full new center. I know as a former retailer, boy, I'd stored something terrible out of the landlord before I'd give up ice cream on that high line. I mean, there is no way I'd get up. So I think that's been a really difficult negotiation for the landlord.
Is it possible, Mr. Young, you could go back to your client and talk to him about, you know, that option possibly? It's kind of hard for me to, I don't know, support that. It's just like a lot.
Sure, we can do that. We can table this. And are you, are you comfortable with the size, or would you prefer that the cabinet be reduced maybe to three-quarter of its overall height size and become a message center? And like you suggest, rotate the, rotate the tenants? Would that be something that the commission could support?
I speak for myself, but I would think the current size, what you currently have now are two, two tenant, you know, boxes you might say, and like the top one would be the computer one, and it would only, you know, it would only be allowed to show just the, those tenants that are in there and rotate that way, not like, you know, special that are, you know, somehow limited to text. And then the second box, it's already there, you know, maybe that's, you know, that's like fourth, or maybe like it is now, but eliminate the bottom one. So you're not increasing square footage of signage at all. That's just my opinion on that.
So what you're suggesting is, so you came through just a little bit garbled, but from what I gather, you're suggesting to eliminate the lower cabinet altogether and make the second cabinet a automatic changeable copy type tenant panel, is that correct?
Yeah, either the top, either the top one or the second one. Yeah, exactly, like that.
Okay. Well, then I would, I would say that we would be in a position to go ahead and table, come back with a revised design to eliminate that lower cabinet and make, make either the first or the second cabinet a, an LED changeable type tenant panel that can rotate the, can rotate the retailers.
Well, you should get the opinion of the other board members here too, because the commission members, I'm not sure if they buy what I said, but that was just my.
Right. What would be the opinion of the other members, please?
I agree with Mike.
I like that idea.
I like the idea. I, I, I think it's a great idea. Good luck with the landlord twisting the arms of the tenants.
Yeah.
I like the idea. I like the idea also. It seems incompatible that you have an analog, old-fashioned sign and a, and a new electronic. It'd be nicer if they both were.
Okay, well, then if the commission members are in agreement, Mr. Freeze, then I would be in a position to table this request and to come back at a later date with a revised application.
Okay by me.
Okay. Do I have a motion to table this request?
I'll make that motion to table this request.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor of tabling this, or you decide, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing no opposed, this is approved for tabling. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you.
Okay, our next case is 8500 North High Street. The African, please, it's Mr. Young again. Okay, who's presenting this case?
Uh, it would be me. This is Dave Rice.
Hey, Dave.
Hey. So this is GC 20-007, 8500 North High Street. It is located at the northeast corner of Lozelle Road and North High Street and is in the area that's served by the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition. The coalition recommends approval of this proposal, and the applicant is asking for variance to 3377.08B1, illumination and special effects to allow a changeable copy sign in the CPD zoning district, and that would be for the Shell Station that you see on the screen right now. The site also has a convenience store, and the area is characterized mostly by commercial uses in that area. The Far North Plan of 2014 discourages both pole signs and electronic or digital signs. Planning Division has considered automatic changeable copy signs particularly with respect to fuel prices. A primary concern regarding this issue is the potential precedent for additional changeable copy signs, not limited to fuel prices, as such, planning is not in support. Staff is recommending disapproval of this request because of the objections that have been expressed, and we feel that even though we have supported changeable copy signs for gas prices in the past, this is something that we can still do actually, but we would probably support a sign that would be a little more, either lower to the ground perhaps, or display a sign that's similar to the United Dairy Farmer sign that you see in the picture before you, currently. So having said that, with, as the current proposal, we are recommending disapproval, but if it is approved by the commission, we would ask that you please consider a condition that limits the automatic changeable copy display to fuel prices only. Also, in the last picture that was just shown, is a suggestion that we had also that thought that if it imitated the signs that were around it, that that would also be something a little more acceptable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Freeze. Mr. Rice, Mr. Young, how tall is this sign?
Uh, the proposed new sign is 20 feet overall height.
Okay. Did you have anything else to present, please?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, according to code, and we have, as you well know, visited this idea of automatic changeable copy and fuel prices on many, many locations that are either in an overlay district or zone CPD, and 99.9% of those, from my understanding and my, my history with these different cases, have all been approved. This particular site, they are permitted by code either a monument sign or a pylon sign like this. There's nothing that is mandated in the text that would limit this particular site to a monument-type sign. In discussions with staff, there was a question regarding the idea that this sign should look like or appear like other signs in the general area like UDF and Taco Bell with some type or kind of a brick base. I am going to read to you the comments that were made by, and I will let you and the commission consider which direction you want to go, but this is the exact language that the Far North Columbus Community Coalition made regarding their approval, and I quote, "Brief discussion about height, fact that there is visibility below the sign and other signs in the area are of similar or taller height made us comfortable with approval," unquote. So the Far North Columbus Community Coalition was comfortable with this as it was presented without any type or kind of base underneath it simply from the standpoint that at a 15-foot setback from the proposed, or from the existing right-of-way, I should say, there's still, it's still out of the clear vision triangle, there's no, it could not be an issue, but they were, they felt comfortable with the idea that there was nothing below it, and it would, it would have some clear visibility. With respect to staff's comments regarding the brick base and to have the sign look like Taco Bell or UDF or the other, we submitted this proposal, I think I gave it to Mr. Rice yesterday, and he had reviewed it and was pleased with the option. So I guess my thought, be comfortable with either one, but I think if it were me from a visibility standpoint and the original proposal myself, I would, I would tend to lean toward the one that did not have the brick base. But I will leave it up to your commission members, questions and thoughts and comments. Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? I'm not particularly, I mean, I'm not particularly fond of the base anymore than I would have been of the other supports, so if you don't, unless someone else has a particular opinion about it, I wouldn't think you'd have to change it, as long as it's limited to prices only. And if the north, the coalition, coalition liked the other proposal, I would prefer sticking with that.
Can I just ask, what, what is the hardship for the reason, asking for a variance to get to this height?
The variance is not for the height, that is for the automatic changeable copy in the CPD-zoned area.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Young. Is there a landscape plan that goes with this that would potentially, you know, put green stuff around it like all the rest of those signs do?
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Williams. There is, if, in your packet, there should be a color picture of, well, there it is. There's some landscaping there now, and just to note, this existing monument sign, as you see it, is only sit back maybe five to eight feet, so the new proposed pylon sign would actually sit back probably another 10 feet, and then they would still have the benefit of the bushes and landscaping in that mounting area that you currently see.
Okay, so we won't see as much of the poles, it up?
Correct, correct.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone else who'd like to speak to this case? If not, I find that the original proposal with the condition of being fuel-only changeable copy is appropriate for this site, and we can vote on it as condition.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cooperman?
Yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Mashinsky?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes, and it is approved. Thank you, Mr. Young.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too. Our next case is 2250 Spiegel Drive, would the African please come forward? Okay, is the applicant here? Is it Mr. Ward or?
Mr. Chairman, I sent a, a email this morning reminding them for probably, oh, probably third or fourth time. I've had a lot of difficulty communicating with these people or getting, I'll say, shall say, getting a response. I talk to them, but they don't talk to me for some reason, I don't know. I would suggest that maybe if we put this last, perhaps, and if they don't make an appearance, then perhaps we could make it, maybe we could table it and see what happens next month.
In other words, Dave, just move number eight in front of this and do seven last?
Uh, yeah. Uh, yeah.
Last, are you good with that? That makes sense, at least temporarily.
I think we lost last.
Last was on mute, he forgot to unmute.
Sorry, I was on mute. We can go ahead and do that, go to eight. It's 8118 Sankus Boulevard, the applicant police report.
Hello?
Okay, I need to swear you in, swear to tell whole truth and nothing but truth, self regard.
I do.
Could you repeat your names for the record and your affiliations to this case?
Bradley Mall Architect with Mall and Lightman.
Are both of you gentlemen going to speak to the case?
Yes.
I need to have both of you sworn in. Are there two people that are going to speak to it?
Yes, there are.
I need you, the name of the other person then.
Joe Malone.
Would you mind spelling that, please? Last name?
M-A-L-O-N-E.
Thank you. Okay, who's presenting this one?
Phil Bennett presenting.
Phil, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 8118 Sankus Boulevard is located on the east side of Sankus Boulevard at the terminus of Brockwell Drive, served by the Far North Columbus Communities Coalition, its own commercial plan development. The 3.8 acre site is developed with the new City of Columbus Police Substation and associated parking. Surrounding uses include single unit dwellings to the west, condominiums to the north, the Luzell Woods Recreation Center to the east, and apartments and an elementary school to the south. The applicant proposes to install a permanent ground sign at the entrance off Sankus Boulevard, south of the drive that you see on the map. The ground side will include on premises and off premises copy for the police station and rec center. The special permit is required for off premises signage and the variance is required to increase the graphic area from 24.71 square feet to 55.8. The Far North Area Plan State Development should utilize integrated signage rather than multiple freestanding signs along the street frontage. The proposal seeks to provide signage for two city facilities adjacent to one another and is therefore supported. Far North Columbus Communities Coalition recommends approval and city departments recommend approval. The nature preserved would otherwise not be permitted to display a sign since the property has no street frontage on Sankus Boulevard. The proposal is also supported by the area plan as it reduces the number of signs along the street frontage and we recommend the condition that the applicant should commit to the stamped sign exhibit. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Gentlemen, would you present your case, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're representing the City of Columbus Division of Public Safety and our adjacent neighbor, the Luzell Woods Recreation Center. We're asking for a variance on the graphic area to allow us to increase our signage to 55.8 square feet. That area is required in part because the sign with the rec center signage was deemed to be a three panel sign. Our actual square footage of the signs in the letters is only 24.4, but using the requirements of the three panel sign, our graphic area is encapsulating a lot of the brick and absolutely surrounding airfares. We feel that it's appropriate to make the adjustment to get the signage for the two properties. The site is located on the apex of the curb on Sankus Boulevard and as you can see from the photo that was there, it's on the top of the hill as well. And our property is at, and both directions. And we figure with the curb, the turn lanes, the 45 mile an hour speed limit, there's a lot for the drivers that are going to be approaching the site and increasing the graphic area is going to help the driver safety in the long run. And we're also asking for a special permit to advertise for the rec center at the back of the property. We have a shared driveway and so the sign will be mounted right at the driveway for both properties. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, this is Rich, I have a question. One of the exhibits shows a picture of the sign. Is that the post sign or is that the sign that's there?
That is the sign that is there, actually. The, before the 19...
Are you trying to legitimize the sign?
The application was made back in December and the decision put the signs made by the facility, Office of Construction Management. The substation was supposed to be dedicated to Kimberly Jacobs, who's the retired chief on April 8th, and at the time, the decision was made between them and public safety to have the sign put in, knowing that it hadn't been approved yet, but so that it would be completed for the dedication.
Well, personally, I have no problem with the sign. I have a problem with the city violating their own codes in order to put it up. I think, just think we ought to set a better example for folks, but be that as it may, I have no problems with it.
Thank you.
That message should go back to somebody that decided this should go without approved, but are there any other questions? If not, this appears appropriate for this particular location and we can vote on it as conditioned.
Okay, Mr. Cooperman?
Echoing Mr. Maschinsky's comment, yes.
Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bender? Mr. Bender, are you there?
Yes, I vote yes.
Mr. Maschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes, and it is approved, gentlemen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Going back to case number seven, have they arrived? Have you noticed any activity, Mr. Rice?
I haven't received any, I didn't see any emails, I've had no phone calls, but my most generous comment that I can give on this, I think, is the fact that, you know, we had a lot of rain and storms last night and these folks are from Philakoff, and a lot of that rain and storms and stuff came up through there, so it could be that they just had an emergency and they weren't able to get ahold of us.
Being generous.
To give them the benefit of the doubt.
Okay.
Well, Chris Oliver, okay, I see, Chris, you're the applicant for that case, correct? I just saw a message. Okay. Do you have audio, Chris? Apparently you can hear me, but we can't hear you. Okay.
He's currently muted.
He's on mute.
Okay.
Right now.
Chris Oliver, are you there? Okay, Chris, you there? Okay, great. Okay, well, Chairman Thompson, I can go forward.
Okay, sir, I need to swear you in, swear to tell whole truth and nothing but truth, self regard.
Hi.
Would you mind giving your name and your affiliation to this case? Thank you. Mr. Rice, are you presenting this one?
Yes, yes, I am, thank you. Okay, so this is case GC19-063, 2250 Spiegel Drive. It's located on the north side of Spiegel Drive, approximately 680 feet east of Shook Road. It is in the area that's served by the Far South Area Commission and they recommend approval of this request. The applicant is asking for two variances to section 3377.24, sections A and D, wall signs for individual uses. This would be to allow a wall sign on a wall without a public entrance on the facade facing an abutting street and to increase the allowable graphic area of a wall sign from 16 square feet to 80 square feet. The site is developed with a packaging company office and warehouse. Office and warehouse uses are predominant in this area by Ripkenbacher Airport. The applicant, well, the city's recommendation is for disapproval on this request. The public entrance of this building faces the parking lot rather than the street, which limits the allowable square footage to 16 square feet. If the elevation facing the street had a public entrance, the allowable traffic area would be 450 square feet. The applicant is recommending disapproval to this request as the applicant has not provided rationale as to why a larger than code compliant sign should be allowed. Staff suggests and would recommend approval to the installation of a ground sign instead. Thank you.
Okay, sir, would you present your case, please? Mr. Oliver?
She's a woman, last.
Oh, I'm sorry. I get this thing. Oh, sorry. Would you present your case, please, ma'am? Oh.
I'm not understanding what she's saying.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we're having trouble picking up your words.
Yeah.
Try again.
This is not working. This is terrible.
Are you there?
Hello? Yes, can you try again and reenunciate and everything, because she's having trouble picking up your words?
Okay.
The city staff feels that they'd get a lot more visibility out of a ground sign anyway, really.
My only question, though, Davis, would it be as visible for semis, depending on the height?
I would imagine it would be okay, but you might have a good point there.
Hi, this is Mike, I had a couple, maybe comments. It would seem to me like the hardship sorta was that the way the building's configured, they have the big windows that are on the front, the doorways on the side, and staff is completely correct on how they're interpreting the whole thing, but I would think the hardship is because the doors on the side, where you have the sign on the front of the building and visibility, and then also the logo, because of that H, I think the client did mention that, you know, if you took the top of the lower K H out, you'd have a sign that's roughly two foot by 20 foot, which, you know, with the 40 feet, you know, I don't know, I would think in this particular case, having that sign on the front would satisfy the owners there, I think, and the trucks would be able to see it well. Add a sign out in the front, you know, maybe that's, if we do put the sign on the front, maybe the condition is they can't have a ground sign, you know, at the entry there. I don't know, it's just kind of my observation on that.
Actually, I think I'd prefer seeing a wall sign on this building if it's semi, but, ma'am, is there a way to get your wall sign under the, under the allowable, under the 400 square feet or? What's the limit, Jamie, or that side, 450?
Well, 16 square feet if it had a, if it did not have a front door, but if it had a front door, you'd be allowed 450 square feet, I mean.
How big is it now?
Chairman Thompson?
Square footage now?
Eighty.
Now, Chairman Thompson, if, right, if this helps you at all, if there was a door that faced the street, they would be entitled to a sign that was 450 square feet, I believe it is.
Okay, and she's only asking for 80?
They're asking, they're asking for 80 square feet.
Okay. Any other questions? I think the hardship here is that the door's on the wrong, on the side of the building and that I will believe it's an effective use of this signage for this type of service to have it in a ground sign. I think if it was, it'd be better served to be a wall sign or semis. So if anyone else has an objection, I think this is appropriate for this as condition that...
I just want to say something last for the record, to have a door on a certain side of a building that a property owner can choose is not a hardship.
Let's just drop that, raise him it, I think that it's visually more effective and a ground sign may be actually a traffic hazard if it's too low for semis. Anybody else want to speak to this or have a question? Not, then I think we should vote on it.
Okay.
Ma'am, would you be open to saying there would not be a ground sign in this case?
Don't do that.
Yes.
Okay, let's vote then, with that condition.
Okay, Mr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Bender?
Yes.
Mr. Maschinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Chairman?
No.
Chairman Thompson?
Yes.
We have four yeses there.
Thank you very much.
It is approved, ma'am. Thank you. Is there any other business, Mr. Rice or Mr. Fries? Congratulate you on how well this worked, even though it was a little bit iffy at times. And right now, are we thinking we'll be doing it again next month?
Yes, that's the plan for next month, probably for the next several months.
Okay. And I want to thank everybody for calling in and being here. This is not exactly the easiest way to do this, but I appreciate it, guys, and stay safe.
Good job, Jamie, at all. Good job for setting this up.
Yes, excellent work, guys.
Thank you.
You as well, it was a very good job.
We're going to get Jamie a better backdrop, though.
Need backgrounds. I don't know how to do backgrounds with this.
His background is Michael. Turn around and wave, Michael.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tony. I'll see you, guys. Have a good evening. Bye.
Have a good month. Bye, everyone.